Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. This is a City of Sioux Falls special council meeting. It is Tuesday, April 3rd, and we're certainly glad that all of you are here today. I will start by introducing you to your city council.
Council members Erickson.
Here.
Urbanbach.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Nitzer.
Here.
Rolfang.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Staley.
Here.
Councilors, thanks for being in attendance today. I certainly appreciate it. We are starting this meeting, as we do all of our meetings, with an invocation. I am so very, very blessed and honored to have Father Chuck Simple of Holy Spirit Catholic Church here with us today. What we'd ask is that you stand for the Father's blessing, and then please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Father Simple?
Thank you. Mayor said I had 45 minutes, so I could limit his time. Before I start, you know, I remember watching the movie Patton where General Patton asked his chaplain before they went into battle to pray for rain. And the chaplain was, you know, had a listen to General Patton and got a little afraid. He prayed and it rained. I did not pray for snow. So I'm beginning with this. "Oh, God, we know you to be a great and awesome God, but on our calendar it's spring, and we look forward to our wonderful green parks in our city and our Big Sioux River flowing freely through our city, but enough with the snow already. You have tested our patience and endurance. Please make it stop." Dear wise and loving God, first we say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this afternoon. Thank you for the past eight years of the leadership of our mayor, Mike. We also thank you for the many and abundant blessings, for life itself, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill all our callings, for sustenance and for our friendships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, for the honor of bearing our appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for our freedom that we share and that we can embrace you. We gather with our mayor for his final State of the City address. We pray for him and his family and for all the various levels of our city officials who gather with us this afternoon. We pray in thanksgiving for their wisdom to govern amid the conflict of interests and issues of our time, for their sense of welfare for true needs of our people, for a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreements, for personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. In our Bible as Christians, we hear of one of the greatest evangelists, Paul, in his instructions to his young friend Timothy, who was taking over leadership in a congregation Paul was leaving. He said to Timothy, "First of all, then I urge you that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all those in high places, that we may lead peaceful and quiet lives, godly and dignified in every way, because this is good. It is pleasing in the sight of God." Now, the king was not a very nice person when Paul was writing this, and many rulers around him weren't so nice either. One would think, "Oh, Lord," that Paul would have qualified his prayer and prayed for just those who were in high positions that he agreed with. But, Lord, that was not the case. Oh, Lord, we do the same. Today, we thank you for eight years of leadership of our mayor, Mike. May he leave us with a sense of peace in his heart for attempting to do his best to use his time and talent to serve our fine city. Give him now the opportunity to enjoy some time of rest before his next venture in his life. We pray for those running for his office, that they too may use their charisms to best serve our city in leadership positions or in being citizens with us in our city. May we, even amidst our different ideologies and theologies, work together to continue to do its best for Sioux Falls. Finally, oh Lord, in 2006, I was there when we celebrated 150 years of our city. Then our mayor, at that time Dave Munson, introduced the matriarch of our city, Sylvia Henkens, at a luncheon to lead us in the city song. No, oh Lord, I'm not going to sing that song, but the second verse is this. "I'm from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. It's the greatest city that I know. I like it more every day. Here's where I'm going to stay, and in the second hundred years, watch it grow." Thank you, oh Lord. Bless our mayor. Bless our next mayor. Bless each of us here today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mike. She's taking over my chair here. Father Simple is our family's priest at Holy Spirit Catholic Church. My goodness, so blessed to have him here with me. Father Simple, thank you. I'm also very, very blessed to have all of you here with me, whether you're here with me in person or watching at home on TV or listening on the radio like we used to do in the olden days. Thank you. This is my last State of the City address, as Father Simple said, and I'm certainly thankful and just thrilled to be able to provide an update on where we are right now, at least as I perceive it, in our great city. Going to have some fun. But before I do that, there is someone who's incredibly special to me, and I hope she's been incredibly special for you, Sioux Falls, over the last eight years. That is your First Lady, my beautiful bride, Kylie's mom, grandpa, or grandma to George, your First Lady Cindy Huether. If you wouldn't mind helping me recognize her, I'd appreciate it. In Sioux Falls, you know I'm full of emotion. I'm going to do my best to try to control that, but maybe to kick it off, I'll do something I usually don't do, but I'm going to just have a little sip of water. All right, Sioux Falls, let's have some fun. My stepfather, Earl Reese, after my mom and dad were first married, I was out in the garage. I was working on a project with him and did not leave the workbench in as tidy a fashion as he was used to. And my stepfather, Earl, who's now passed, he said, "You know, Mike," he goes, "I would ask that you leave things better than you found them." I'm of German-Russian descent, and my stepfather, Earl, was of Norwegian descent. Never heard him say anything bad about anybody, but I'll tell you, he was such a kind and warm man. But this advice that he gave this young Yankton buck in the early stages of his life is just advice that I've just taken to heart, and I've tried to do that as your mayor as well. We've accomplished so much, including leaving things better than we found them eight years ago, thanks to the efforts of so many. I want to talk about some of the ways that we got there and some of the things that we tackled over these last eight years, all tying into the state of your city, the state that we all love and admire. I just want to talk about a number of those things. First of all, we are Midwest through and through here in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. We work hard for these dollars. We use them to provide for our families. Yep, we save for that rainy day fund, and we invest wisely where appropriate. That same recipe has served us very, very well over the last eight years. Our financials are incredibly strong. I know you've heard me say this. Some of you don't believe it, but I believe it's real. I do think that we may have the strongest city government in terms of our financials in the country. You know, how did we get this way? How did we get here? Well, I think one of the things it started with is that we've had a city council now as well as in the past that felt that, yeah, frugal, frugality is a good thing. We've actually set a policy that was done way before I was the mayor, where they felt that we should have a 25% reserve level when it came to our operating dollars. And as you can see, we've maintained that reserve in a fine fashion. In fact, out of the eight years that I've had the blessing to serve you as your mayor, we have added to our city's piggy bank, six out of those eight years, only two times have we actually dipped in to the piggy bank. Not many cities, not many at all, can say that they could actually live without an extra dollar. They could actually continue serving their city for at least three to four months. You can do that here in Sioux Falls, again, thanks to the piggy bank that we've created. I have heard folks over the last eight years talk about this unmanageable debt. I've heard it. It's so unbelievably far from the truth, so far from reality. The reality is, what they're saying is not true, not true at all. We invest very, very wisely here. We utilize bonding in a very, very conservative way in Sioux Falls. Our ability to repay on any debt is so unbelievably solid. I mean, look at the chart that's showing up above. By 2021, we will actually have less debt than we had in 2010, and that includes investing in our new event center like we did back in 2012. In fact, our per capita debt, the amount of debt that we have per person that is living as a citizen in Sioux Falls, has actually reduced, been reduced, since I started in In 2010, it was $1,751 per citizen. Now it's $1,728 per citizen, and that includes investing in all the great things that we've done to enhance our quality of life, to keep us safe, and on and on and on. Look at the chart. We're all Midwestern frugal. We've all got the same bloodlines. We know the value of this dollar. Just look at a couple of our peer cities. Fargo, North Dakota, has three times the debt per capita than we have. Omaha, Nebraska, two times the debt per capita than we have. Sioux City, Iowa, two times the debt that we have. We manage debt incredibly well here in Sioux Falls. I love it. I'm going to go back to the council. My goodness, you can't imagine how tough it is for an elected official to actually have the guts to raise fees. The easy thing to do, the politically savvy thing to do, is to vote no. Vote no. Vote no. No. Raising fees to keep up with rising costs is the responsible thing to do. It shows leadership. It's the appropriate thing to do. It is sound leadership, but oh my goodness, is it hard. I appreciate the city council supporting these responsible fee increases over the last eight years. I'm not going to go through them all, but look at what they tackled. Look at what they agreed to. One important thing, too, to remember when it comes to fee increases, one thing that it does is that it actually ensures that the users are paying for the service. What a concept. What a concept. That makes frugal sense. That's the right thing to do. Again, thank you, council. If I was elected back in 2010, I said that I would do whatever I could to prioritize repairing, rebuilding, and replacing our aging infrastructure. Yep, how many times have you heard that? Mark, repair, rebuild, replace. Don, repair, rebuild, replace. Sioux Falls, repair, rebuild, replace. That has become our mantra over the years, and oh my goodness, did we execute it and more. You know, we found the right balance. Talked a little bit about dollars coming out of the blocks. We found that right balance. In fact, over six out of every $10 that we've spent over the last eight years has gone to this boring but unbelievably critical infrastructure. The boring stuff, not only above the ground that you can see, but maybe more importantly, the boring stuff that you can't see, the stuff in the dirt. You know, the saying, "Smoother roads ahead," that kicked off long before the last Holiday of Lights campaign. We took this more as just a slogan. We took it to heart, and boy, did we execute it. We have been executing it in full force since 2010. In fact, one of my first moves as mayor, and oh my goodness, was it unpopular at the time, coming out of the blocks, we took money that was intended for the arterial roads, the roads on the outskirts of town, and we made a really tough and controversial decision by saying, "Nope, let's move those dollars to repair, rebuild, and replace the inner core of our town." These were the roads that were most dire need of attention in 2010. We've made solid progress, and in fact, in eight years, we have repaired, rebuilt, and replaced over almost 500 miles of roads. Takes us from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, to Gillette, Wyoming. You don't believe it? And some don't. Well, what we did is we actually brought in an independent third party to basically take a picture and evaluate every single road in the 78 square miles of our town. And here's what they said. They said, "Our condition index is a 70, or very, very good, and when you compare that with other cities, we're doing very, very well." Now, for the next mayor, for the next council, we have a much more objective way to evaluate which roads we should tackle next, which need the most attention. We have that in our arsenal, and it will help us budget our dollars accordingly. Water. My goodness, do we take that for granted or what? Why don't you talk to the cities and towns and states that are struggling with an availability of water or having quality water? I commend the prior mayors before me, the administrations, the city councilors before me, for addressing this in our great city in a very, very proactive and aggressive way. We kept that focus going since 2010, while other communities, and you're reading about them all the time, they're truly struggling with not only the readily supply of water, they're dealing with quality issues too, not in Sioux Falls. We're in good shape for generations to come. And in fact, we're planning accordingly all the way out until 2050. The state of our city when it comes to water is really, really good. Oh, I'm driving down the road. I was newly elected mayor, driving down the road. Just got done with a meeting at the Sioux Empire Mall, coming down Western, and I get this emergency call. "Mayor, we need you downtown immediately. We've got an emergency." I came walking in. Mark Cotter was waiting there for me. He goes, "Mayor," he goes, "we've had a major sanitary sewer line collapse." Remember that, Sioux Falls? Had a major sanitary sewer line collapse, and we're at risk of having 25,000 to 30,000 homes with raw sewage in their basement if we don't do something. It was a wake-up call for Sioux Falls. It was a wake-up call for this mayor. It was a wake-up call for all of us, all across South Dakota, and yes, across this And it scared me to no end. I was just elected as your mayor, but we tackled it so well. We've actually now taken cameras, Sioux Falls, to prepare not only our city now, but for the years to come. We've actually taken cameras now, and we've gone through these water lines, these sewer lines, and we've been able to identify where are the weak links when it comes to our city's infrastructure. We know our weak spots now, and we're addressing them wisely. You know, trying to figure out, how do I help educate the people, these mayoral candidates, these city council candidates? How do I educate them on some of these things that you just will never expect is going to happen? Get a load of this. I've only served you for eight years, and in that time, we've had three 100-year rain events. We've had one 300-year rain event, and we actually, just about a year and a half ago, we had a 1,000-year rain event. What that means is that you're only supposed to have a rain event like that every 1,000 years, or every 300 years, or every 100 years. Now, they're commonplace in Sioux Falls. But even with that, again, because of the leadership, because of the things that we've done here in Sioux Falls, we're ready. We're ready. These things put people at risk, but we've proactively prepared to keep you safe. The reality is, water damage, water risk, is one of the greatest liabilities that you have as a homeowner, as a church, as a business, and as a city. But when it comes to flood risk in Sioux Falls and water risk in Sioux Falls, my goodness, we're actually taking people out of the flood plain in Sioux Falls, not adding them. Sioux Falls is ready. When I was running for mayor, you know, I kept hearing over and over again from people all over Sioux Falls and all over South Dakota, I kept hearing them. They kept saying, "When are we going to create an environment where these people that are graduating from our high schools, these people that are talented people, these families that want to, you know, do good things? When are we going to create an environment where they choose to stay versus leaving?" Better yet, gosh, wouldn't it be great if we created an environment where not only people would choose to stay? Maybe we could get the people that left, maybe we could get them to move back home. Sioux Falls is where I choose to live. Sioux Falls is where you've chosen to live. And oh my goodness, you're going to see in slides coming up, Sioux Falls is the place where people want to live. We've done it. We've done it. Don't believe me? Our citizens wholeheartedly agree. City council, they complete a citizen survey, which I'm thrilled by. Just go through some of the results. 91% of the people believe that Sioux Falls is an excellent or a good place to live, 89% think Sioux Falls is an excellent or a good place to raise their kids. And again, back to that quality of life pillar, 88%, regardless of what you hear, they believe that Sioux Falls has an overall quality of life that's excellent or good. The heartbeat, the heartbeat. This is the one that I started my campaign in, in 2009. It's the one where I was down there going, and I was talking to people, and they were going, "Mike, what are we going to do to keep our doors open? What are we going to do? How are we going to pay for our employees?" I went to every single building, every single floor. I could have lived in certain floors, and you would have never found me for months. The heartbeat of our city has never pumped faster, and it's never been stronger than it is right now. And I truly believe the best of downtown Sioux Falls is, it lies ahead. It's yet to come, and it didn't come easy. Public support and certainly private investment has been the catalyst, and yes, some controversial decision-making too. Anyone remember the old parking ramp that was over the river? Anybody remember that? Nope, not anymore. It was fully paid for. It was the most utilized parking ramp in our entire system. The location was absolutely perfect. And I said, "Let's tear it down. Let's focus on the city as a whole. How are we going to grow that downtown? How are we going to make it more attractive as a place to live, work, and play, and yes, You take your hits, but it's worth it. You dream bigger, and you make it happen. You don't wait for it to happen, and there's more to come." Our Denny Sanford Premier Center, one of the most controversial topics that we've ever had in our city's history, and for some reason, some choose to, I mean, keep it controversial. It's the 44th busiest event center in America. It operates in the black. It generates sales tax revenue, event after event after event. In fact, we have an event there about once every three days. Can you imagine that? This multipurpose event center serves us once every three days. There were four city councilors, four, that said yes to building that event center. Kenny Anderson Jr., Jim Entiman, Dean Karski, and Rex Rolfang. If one of them, only one, would have voted no, here's the reality. We'd still be using the Sioux Falls Arena as our entertainment showplace. Tell them thank you next time you see them. Boy, if I could, I would take the 23,284 people who voted yes, and I'd tell them all thank you too. That was November 8th, 2011. It happened to be one of the largest voter turnouts in our city's history. It was number two. 58% said yes. Let's finally tackle this thing that we've been talking about forever. Let me take you back. Yep, the Sioux Falls Arena, that's where we'd That's where we'd be. No Eagles, no Elton, no Sir Paul McCartney, no Pheasant Fest, no Division One sporting events, no PBR, no this, nor none of that. This leadership gig is hard. It's really, really hard when you tackle something that has failed so many times before. In nineteen fifty-one, we actually started the debate on whether we should provide a public place for people to swim, regardless of the rain, the wind, the snow, regardless. Sixty-three years later, sixty-three years later, we conquered it, Sioux Falls. April eighth, two thousand and fourteen. Four years ago today, seventy percent of the voters wanted us to provide a new indoor pool. Leaders today that I'm gonna be saying goodbye to, and leaders in the future. These are controversial opportunities, but they can be tackled. And in this case, we did it. It was another win for our city and another quality of life investment. I would beg of you, please don't forget so many of the other things that we've tackled that, that really have set this state of the city in just, in just a really rock-solid shape when it comes to quality of life. The Sanford Sports Complex, one of the very first tiffs that we've ever done here with, with me as your mayor. The new Elmwood Golf Course that we're gonna celebrate once, as the, as Father said, once that snow clears. The new management company that'll take us to new heights. Whether it be libraries, whether it be the bike trail, that, yes. Westsiders, you now have access to your bike trail. And all of our parks are up to speed, all of them. Regardless of their income, regardless of where they live, regardless of who their city councillor is, regardless of where their mayor lives, all of our parks are up to speed and are something to be proud of. One of the toughest things that, that you realize when you're in this role is that valuing good neighbors is one thing, but oh my goodness, it only takes one bad neighbor, one, to mess it up for the ninety-nine good ones. We've done some things to try to spur on this neighborhood involvement, whether it be, taking these neighborhood associations to much greater heights in, in only eight years. But yet code enforcement has been big, and Matt I C is in the audience, and Mike is in the audience. I just can't thank you enough for tackling this on behalf of our people, because it's not a popular thing to do. Uh, it's not. But remember, one bad neighbor messes it up for the ninety-nine good ones. They do, Sioux Falls. They do. Thank you. You know, I get this. I've run for mayor twice. I, I get it. I get it. There, it's, it's a, you know, you gotta try to find a way to capture the attention of the electorate as best you can. I, I get it. I get it. But when it comes to Sioux Falls being safe, boy, does that one, that one get ya. That one get ya. Cause when you're the mayor, your number one priority, number one, is to make sure that the people that you serve, the visitors to your community, you make sure, the best way that you can, to make sure that they're, they're safe. It's the number one factor in a quality of life when it comes to serving your people. Number one. But I get it. You know, I, I understand the rhetoric. I, I, I do. I do. But here's the facts. Here's the facts. Crime rates are actually getting better. They are. In fact, thirteen out of fifteen indicators in two thousand and seventeen, the, the crime rate's actually dropped. And actually, our people believe it. They do, regardless of the rhetoric. The last survey, seventy-seven percent felt that the overall safety in Sioux Falls is excellent or good. Also, there's some other good news. Thanks for our police team who are working their butts off on your behalf. They're taking so many risks to protect and serve you. You know what? You do the crime in Sioux Falls, we're gonna get ya. We'll catch ya. We'll catch ya. Our clearance rates are dramatically better than anything you're gonna see across the country. And the strength of our force, I, I'm proud of it. We've added forty-six new police officers since two thousand and ten. We've increased our, our team by about fifteen percent. Can we do more? Should we do more? It, it's one of those things that you try to find that balance when you're in this role. Uh, the council does their best to try to find that balance. But one thing that I'll tell you is that our police team, because of the things that they've done, they've been able to keep up with this, this growth that we have in our population, and they've been able to, you bring on the crime, we'll, we'll take care of it. We will. We'll keep it under wraps, and they, they've just done an admirable job doing it. There's other ways that we protect and serve, and of course, that's with our, our fire and rescue team. I just had lunch with Fire Station Eleven about an hour and a half ago. And they said, "Mayor, do you think that people realize how important the ISO One rating is or, or this accreditation is?" You know, I don't know, Fire, Fire Station Eleven, but I do. I do. It's a big deal. Our fire and rescue team, they've been working so hard over the years to, to try to, to try to get that, that designation, and they've done it. And Sioux Falls, it is a, it's a, it's a badge of honor when you have that. They've earned it, and it's serving you well. There's other things we do, gotta recognize these other teams, because it is certainly a team approach. Metro Communications, Sioux Falls Police, Sioux Falls Fire and Rescue, our Health Department, and yes, the REMS A Team, and yes, Paramedics Plus. This team approach has worked incredibly well. One of the things that you'll learn in, in this public service gig is that, one of the most noted sayings when it comes to evaluating the strength of your community, the strength of your state, the strength of your nation, and its overall health and success, is often referred, referred to in a short but hard-hitting statement. "It's the economy, stupid." Well, if that is indeed the key, and I do think it plays a, a key role, especially if you look back where we were in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. We look pretty darn smart right now, don't we, Sioux Falls? Not only are we positioned for, you know, growth, but look at what we've done. Boom, 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 and boom. Construction records time and time again, and I'm gonna say it right now, Sioux Falls, in two thousand and eighteen, we will break it again. It will be a six-straight year of record-breaking construction. Sorry to put the pressure on you, Mike. This, uh, next topic, it's, it's a major win, but it's also a, a major concern for our great city. We have almost cut our employment rate, our unemployment rate in half since two thousand and ten. That, that's a good thing, cause what it does is it improves wages, it improve, improves wages for our workers. Benefits must be more competitive if you're gonna keep these employees on your team. And yes, the employers must pay strong attention to the work environment too. You know, millennials are the ones who are kinda driving this message home in terms of the work environment. But others are paying attention to it as well. One of the challenges though is that when you have such a low unemployment rate, it also can, can hold you back. The lack of availability of workforce, it is a challenge in our city and our state. There is certainly a collaborative effort though to address it. Not only do we have good jobs, but we're creating good jobs for all of you. The opportunities are great right now, and that's across all sectors. Blue collar, white collar, gray collar, financial, manufacturing, service, retail, healthcare, you name it. Sioux Falls is creating good jobs for you. Folks, if you haven't updated your resume lately, I encourage you to do it. There's plenty of opportunity out there for you, and employers, they want you. And the good news is spreading. Since I've been blessed to be your mayor, we've had to continue, continue a pace of growth that, that we just never imagined. And in only eight years, we've added the city the size of Aberdeen onto Sioux Falls. But not only are we growing as a city, this metropolitan area, all around us, they are, they are accomplishing and doing great things as well. I came from corporate America. I came from business. Uh, that's where I spent the, the bulk of my professional career. You know, I've, I've really enjoyed this aspect, uh, over the last eight years, working with the, the city government team. We have been truly running government like a business. Yep, I'm gonna say that again. We've been running government like a business. And bringing business acumen into government, you know, educating the, the employees and, and the team on, on its principles, and, and then executing those practices, it's made a big difference in how we've been able to address and serve our citizens. Doing things the way you've always done them, i- it serves no one. This has not been easy. It's not been inexpensive. But because our twelve-hundred-plus city employees, they've been committed to reaching higher, doing more, great progress has certainly been made. We have never been more efficient in city government. We haven't. You know, doing things like, like centralizing departments, what it does is it allows your employees to focus on the things that they do best. Especially on the front line. We were using nineteen eighties financial management software in Sioux Falls back in two thousand and ten. Can you imagine running a half a billion-dollar business and you're using nineteen eighties, uh, financial management software? But it wasn't just that. It was other technology, other software that, that, that we were using, that was very, very disjointed. People were, departments were doing things on their own. No more. Our ability to serve and communicate and respond a, as a city team, it, it's as good now as it's, as it's ever been. The investment in the time, the resources, and the taxpayer dollars, they will create dividends for a long, long time to come. And city employees, before I leave you, thank you. This was so hard, and I know there were probably times where you wanted to give up and go, you know, why are we doing this? Why are they, why are they having us use this new software or this, or this new equipment? I, I wanna thank you for, for tackling it. Providing a good place to work isn't just for people that work outside of city government. It should apply for people that are working in city government too. We tackled that. Uh, City Hall was one of the very first places that we started. We invested over six-point-two million dollars in our city hall. But it wasn't just our city hall, it was all these other buildings where our employees were located, from fire stations to libraries to parks, buildings to, to, um, uh, our sanitary landfill and, and so much more. These people spend a lot of time working for you, Sioux Falls. They deserve a good place to work. These twelve-hundred city employees, talk a little bit about them. I've said it before, they, they truly have been busting their tails. They have. They've been working so hard on behalf of all of you. What's in, what's interesting is it's been truly a collaborative effort. And one of the biggest things that we tackled, and no one will cover it, pension reform. Pension reform. Your city employees, Sioux Falls, they agreed to work together to find common ground, to communicate, to collaborate, and what they did is they ultimately saved you three-hundred-million dollars over the next thirty years because of their ability to tackle pension reform as, as a team. Thank you. These people are proud to work for the city. We do have a, we've got a lot of people that wanna work here, and once they work here, they stay here. Our turnover rate is very, very good. I just kinda wanna add a little perspective for you. Again, just to let you know how hard these city employees have been working for you. Earlier, I told you about, we've added the city of Aberdeen onto the city of Sioux Falls in only eight years. Aberdeen's a pretty big town, isn't it? In the last eight years, we've only added a hundred and eight positions here in the city of Sioux Falls. My gut says that I'll bet they have more than a hundred and eight employees in the city of Aberdeen, serving those people. What they've done is they've worked harder, they've worked smarter, they've worked more diligently, they've worked more as a team, they've found ways to, to do more with less. These city employees have been just incredible for you, and it's a testament to them. Our foundation is strong, Sioux Falls, it is. Uh, it's ready. It's ready for whatever comes its way. And, and if I only had more time, there were some blocks that we were building, and they're ready to be laid, but yet this council, the next mayor, and the group of the citizens of Sioux Falls, they'll have these building blocks ready to be put into place. Let's just go through a couple of them. Number one, our downtown, really, our redevelopment. Uh, I do believe it is going to be, uh, the biggest accomplishment in our city's history. I just wish I only had some more time to, to see it through. Take your time, Sioux Falls. Do it right. Uh, this is, this is a big, big deal. The United States Taxpayers, they gave us thirty-five to forty-million dollars to do it on their behalf. Uh, but I'm really, really excited about it. Have fun. The mixed-use parking ramp. Uh, another block that's ready to be put into place. Controversial at times, but you wait, after that thing opens, a year later, people will be saying, "Why didn't we do this a long time ago?" The city administration building. We talked about finding a place not only to, to allow our employees a great place to work, but also what a, what a great investment it's gonna be in terms of providing our citizens a great place to be served. The Levitt Shell. I know there was some debate in terms of where do you put that new event center, its location? And I know that it was controversial at times. Uh, the Levitt Shell is the perfect event center for our downtown. We're doing some studies right now that I think will serve the people very, very well. First of all, we, we are evaluating our compensation and our benefits for this really, really important city team. Competitive pay and benefits, they are critical to attracting those people that you want working for you and with you. But one of the hardest things you learn, uh, and this council certainly learned it, and this mayor has, is that, you know, whether you're a mayor, or a governor, or a city council, or, or a legislator, you learn that you really, you wanna pay every, you wanna be these people that are working so hard with you, you wanna pay them, you know, everything that they want and more. They're your teammates. They're in the arena with you, but you just can't. You work together to find that balance and still serve. I thank the entire team for doing that. We're doing a public safety facility study right now, and, and the goal will be to, let's look at all these incredible things that we've invested in. Um, these buildings, this equipment, and more importantly, these women and men that are serving you to keep you safe. Let's maximize our utilization as best we can. I hope that that study is done before I'm done serving you as mayor, but if not, it's ready to be teed up for the next mayor and the next council. The arena and Orpheum Study, you know, I talked, I started off by talking about that old Sioux Falls Arena. I do, I still love that place. I do. Uh, it has been a workhorse for our, for our great city. Uh, that's another study that we've done, uh, that I'm hoping we get the results on pretty soon. Uh, but again, I want it done right versus I want it done fast, but how can we utilize that arena in, in the future? Same thing applies for the Orpheum Theater and the Sioux Falls Stadium. Again, these, these blocks, they're ready to be put into place. And, uh, Councillor Kylie and, and others will certainly let you, um, uh, do what you can with, with those. At this point in time, in the presentation, most politicians in the presentation, most politicians, what they would do is they would just kinda say thank you, and they'd write off in the sunset. That's what a politician would do. I never liked that word, politician. I prefer the word, public servant. I was elected to lead. I was asked to make tough decisions, and certainly asked to make some decisions where we would tackle tough topics. I've also tried to do the best I can to relay to the people what I think are some of the challenges that we face as a community. With that in mind, I'm just gonna stay in the saddle with you just a little bit longer. And I do wanna talk about what I believe are some of the real challenges that we still face, though, in this very, very vibrant city that we call Sioux Falls. The biggest one, bar none, and there's not a candidate that's talking about it. And it's not just mayoral candidates, to be fair to them. It's gubernatorial candidates, too. The number-one issue that we face as a city and as a state involves how we pay for things. It's the number-one thing. We don't have a spending problem in South Dakota. We don't have a spending problem in Sioux Falls. What we have is we have a revenue problem in both entities. We're not alone. You can see, we are still growing our revenue, which has been, you know, a good thing. But when you're growing four to five thousand people a year like we are in Sioux Falls, and you're trying to keep up with growth as well as repair, replace, and rebuild infrastructure, as well as invest in good quality of life and all these other things, your challenge is gonna be, how are you gonna pay for those things? And right now, whether we like it or not, the way the rules are set up is that if you are reliant on sales tax revenue, we're at a major disadvantage in Sioux Falls and in South Dakota. In a couple of months, one of the biggest court cases that we'll face as a city and as a state is gonna take place. We must win that. We must. Because if we don't, we're gonna have real, real challenges and real, real problems in Sioux Falls and in South Dakota. Let's start talking about it. Let's prepare for it, because it's real. You know, when you live in a boomtown like we are in Sioux Falls, it does create a situation where, you know, with a lot of good, but there's also some challenges that it creates as well. You know, one of the biggest ones that I think we've lost ground on, and it's fair to say that it's a concern, comes to affordable housing. Because what you do, see, if you're in a boomtown, you take these older properties, these areas that are not as popular, that are cheaper to rent, cheaper to buy, what you do is you tear those down, or you refurbish them, or you use those in a different way. And what that does is that it displaces people that liked living there, that could afford living there. And now, they can't do that as readily. Affordable housing is a real, real challenge in our city right now. For eight years, we've been trying to tackle a topic called public transportation. This is one where probably the council and I, we've not seen eye to eye in terms of the best way to attack it. And I respect it. I do. But it's a problem. It is. We are growing so rapidly, and a number of these people that are moving into town, they're used to a public transportation system to get them from point A to point B. Here in Sioux Falls and in South Dakota, we're used to a truck or a car. And we can't rely on that anymore. This is a big one. And again, council, and mayoral candidates, and people of Sioux Falls, it's one that we're gonna have to address, in my mind, in a much more aggressive fashion than what we're doing today. We are growing, and I love the fact that we're growing. It's a sign of a vibrant community. It is, it's a wonderful thing. I mean, what a great problem to have. But I do wanna take you back to one of those pillars that we're doing so well on. But at the same time, the reality is is that it's very, very expensive to keep up with infrastructure. Not only the old stuff, but the new stuff that you wanna invest in, too. Repairing and rebuilding is expensive. Expanding is expensive. The demands of a growing city that is growing four to five thousand people, it is expensive. The effort to keep up with it will be enormous. You know, with the help of Mayor Allender, Steve Allender, who knows what it's like to be in the battle when it comes to fighting crime. The mayor and I, we, with the help of the media, and thank you for this, we got together, and we had one mayor on the west side of the state, another mayor on the east side of the state. And we had a heart-to-heart talk with the people of Sioux Falls, Rapid City, and all of South Dakota about one of the challenges that we have here in Sioux Falls and in South Dakota, and that is meth and opioid-fueled crime. Regardless of the rhetoric, there is no easy fix. Ask our police team. Ask Rapid City's police team. Ask any police team across the nation. Ask any mental health facility. Ask any professional that's been trying to tackle drugs in our nation for hundreds of years. There is no easy fix. But in the city of Sioux Falls, we have been addressing it, and our efforts are paying off. I couldn't be more proud and pleased with our efforts. The work, the sacrifice, and yes, the results of our police team, they have paid off handsomely. Regardless of the rhetoric that will continue. Partnerships work in Sioux Falls, they do. The good things that have happened, they've not happened because of just the mayor, or just the council, or just the city employees. They really have happened in a collaborative way. People care about Sioux Falls. You heard Father Simple talk about that. "We love this place, we all want it to do well." Everyone has a cause that they care about. They do. They're passionate about it. They wanna see it through, and many times in city government, they're gonna come to you for help in making that happen. You know, there's risk. There's risk, there's reward, they wanna try to minimize their risks as best they can. And would the city be willing to take on part of that risk? I get it. You know, I get it, I get the value of taxpayer assistance. I get the value of partnerships. I get the value of collaboration. I get that, and I respect it. But here's what I would just highly encourage, not only the public servants that are at my side right now, but also those that want to serve. And this is not easy. I would just ask, stay focused on the city as a whole. As long as you do that, and yes, every now and then, tell a special interest, "No." Tell a special interest, "Not yet." Or tell a special interest, "Let's meet in the middle" so that the city of Sioux Falls wins. If you use that as your mantra, our city will be in great shape. Our foundation is incredibly strong right now, Sioux Falls. I've done my best to try to lay that out for you today. The one remaining block in the foundation that I really wanna let you know is there, and it's just rock-solid, is one that I consider the most important in just about everything that we do in our life, in our business, in our home, in our church, in our community. It is all about confidence. And we're brimming with confidence right now. There's nothing that we don't believe as a city that we can accomplish right now. We've proven that over the last eight years. It's been one heck of a team effort. And I thank you. We have proven that. You can't go on an eight-year run of success like we've had without collaboration in this form of government. It's a strong mayor form of government, that's real. But the strong mayor doesn't determine everything that's gonna happen in your town. It does take a team effort, it does take collaboration. It takes finding that common ground, it finds, it takes disagreeing at times. everything that we've set out to accomplish over the last eight years, at least in some way, we've been able to accomplish. Not every challenge has been met with overwhelming support from the public, or yes, the council. Some took eight votes. Some took five. Some needed four, and then this mayor had to break the tie. There were even a couple where we got things done because three councilors stood beside me and the people of Sioux Falls as a whole, and decided, "Let's try to move Sioux Falls forward and tackle that objective." But in all cases, we succeeded. I'll tell you, working with my fellow city employees, it's just been an incredible pleasure. Collaborating with my fellow elected public servants. And that's what we are. We're elected public servants. It's been such an honor. And serving my fellow citizens of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, my town, your town, it has been a dream come true. One final thought. One final thought. As I leave you, you know, I don't know what the, what we're gonna remember over these last eight years. But I will say this. One thing's for sure. Not only is our foundation strong, but our government is unbelievably strong. And we've proven, not only to Sioux Falls and South Dakota, but to America, that we got stuff done in government. Boy, did we ever, Sioux Falls. And we're not done. There's great things to come. God bless you and your families. It's been an honor and a blessing to serve. I appreciate your attendance today. Certainly appreciate you allowing me the ability to relay what I believe is our state of the city right now. But with that in mind, could I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Councilor Chair. Seconded by Councilor Rolfing. All those voters say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned, Sioux Falls. Make it a great day.